Well, I got probably mild heat. This last match, you might have been spraying that.
But she was just getting on ourselves. Why are you speaking?
I hate to play the part of being nice to you. I mean, I don't know. It's like I'm watching. Can we be in charge? I'll get with you. Thank you. Just one job. I want you to rise. I didn't see much. Sound like this is too much.
That's not me, huh?
Yeah. She thinks when it comes up that will change. It's a mob who grew up there.
I think they're very positive. I can hope they're very positive. Okay. Well, you know, it's like, oh, it's like, it's my daughter.
We can put all the hundreds in there and margaritas afterwards.
Yeah. He didn't say what I had.
No, but I just put the boat to it now. Absolutely. And nobody stops on your back. You have different jobs. You have different jobs. You have a full attention. You have the ability to allow nature.
All right, we're gonna start the public hearing for the mass gathering application submitted for the Oxford County Agricultural Society for the Oxford Fair September thirteenth to the sixteenth. Any public comment? See Chief Jack is in the back. We've gotta report the man. All's good. All good. We get from the board. Just to make sure everybody here turns out. Last call, anyone? We'll close the public hearing and start the selectance meeting. Please join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Action on the minutes. Salute. We'll do a secondhand discussion. All those in favor? Move. Any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Public comments. Please state your name and the town that you are from for the record. Show our hands if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Lois. Hi. The coming out, you wanted them cut last year, coming out of Aspen, after the durk pine, that weed that grows better than anything I've ever planted is, you really can't see.
Yeah, it's grown up again. You're right, Lois.
Yeah, well, it was a havoc. It kept inching out and that truck, that big truck, they didn't even see it. People couldn't right over it and I thought we were done that day. But anyway, we also, so, so they, are they gonna cut the sides of the roads or not?
That is the plan, yes. So we have the tractor to be able to do the cutting on the side. They're a little shorthanded right now, so they haven't been able to keep up a hundred percent, but I'll mention it to Jim.
Being booed, yeah, it goes everywhere. He knows what he's talking about.
Patricia Thomas. Kingston Brown has been working on some properties in Oxford on the local road to be cleaned up. One of the major eyesores has been cleaned up and I really appreciate him going to visit, sending a letter because I believe that really helped. The home on Independence Drive, that has been started. The other one down the street has not, across from the hurt house. And at the last meeting, somebody brought up it would be nice if the, if people in the town would get together and help these people, but when you see a lot of able-bodied people out in the area, you know, I am glad to see that it is being picked up, but there's definitely, any of the places has been able-bodied but one, and I believe my husband and I are gonna help him out. And he is a veteran and he is in very, very poor health. So that's really made a good visiting and a letter has helped.
Is the gentleman up in the back? I can't see around the corner. He's gonna come over.
My name is Eric Lowell. I'm a resident and an employee of the town. There's a piece of property that the town owns off Aspen Ave that I'm interested in purchasing, so a four-heater lot. There's no road fronting or right-of-way, but it does it. But it's my property, so I just need the approval from the select board to sell that. I've already talked to Kingston and Adam about it as well.
I told him to come in and just share in the public comment, you know, his intentions if he's interested in, you know, purchasing that. The board is interested in having you research that. I'll research it if that's a possibility to look into selling any of that property over there. I know a lot of the history of that and the parcels, so.
So that would have to go to a special town meeting or a town meeting because the sale of town property, it has to be approved by the voters?
Where is this? I mean, I get it. Which one is it? Right there by the end?
It's, I'm one oh six, Aspen Ave, and it's just behind me. It's popular. Popular to have is a couple of properties after it. It's just, it was designated as a recreational lot.
Recreational lot. I remember the lot now.
Yeah.
Do we have a, I think we even put a portable tow or a, we much long time, build one?
That's not the one he's talking about, I don't think.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. The next one up?
This is completely undeveloped. It's all wooded.
Find out if it's, I think he's not the outside of it. It sounds like it's not a buildable.
Yeah, it's on the right-hand side of the road if you're going up from number six road.
Okay, okay, all right.
The whole, by the, you mean the Brooklyn? No, the little, except by the church.
Yes. It blocks the church property and another property that is off Pierce Road, but Pierce Road doesn't connect to this.
It comes off the top from Pierce Road.
Yes.
Gotta look into it, huh?
If you guys are interested, I'll look into it and find out more.
Yep.
It's a part of the recreation subdivision, right, Lois? Way back, those lots were part of the recreation subdivision when we were on recreation years ago, but I don't think, I don't think there was a blanket permission given by the voters to sell those lots.
It's the state.
I thought that was what we brought to town meeting about, so.
Not that I remember.
That's where we're on the, like, Thompson Terrace.
You've sold a few of them that you didn't.
There was no, there shouldn't have been. There was a couple that were sold and they shouldn't have been sold because here actually wasn't the authority given to sell them. I remember that.
The comment, I'm just gonna look into that. Get back to us and we'll proceed from there.
Thank you.
My name is Dean Mazarev. I live over on East Oxford. There has been some recent departures from the town from the highway department and as far as I know, we have left with two highway department personnel and one parks and rec personnel. I was wondering what the town plans to do to entice new people to apply. I would like to know if there's gonna be any sort of retention program come about because of this. The other question I have is because everybody left so abruptly within the last two months, three people have got done, has there ever been considered anything about exit interviews to find out why all of a sudden people are getting done? I understand that people go and leave jobs every day, but it just seems to raise a little red flag for me, being that three people have left in two months, so I didn't know if there was anything as far as the exit interviews that the town does. And the other thing that I'd like to bring up is the excavator that the town has, needs to have a Class A license to move it, and so if any projects need to get done, who is moving the excavator to project to project? Is that being hired out or are we driving on a Class B license?
So the foreman does have a Class A license and right now he's the only one that can move things place to place.
Okay.
So that, it's difficult, but that's what we're doing. As far as the retention piece, one of the challenges that we have is that wages have changed, market wages have changed a lot. The union contract that the town has, because the highway department is union, is wages haven't caught up. That was negotiated about two years ago, I believe it was, and that's when those wages are based on. So these employees that have left, what I'm being told is that the majority of the issue is money, and I'm not, not to be disrespectful, but they're getting more money when they're leaving. I think that we're in a position where we're going to have to be revisiting that and revisiting those wage, you know, wage scales to figure out if there's a way to entice people. I think the town still offers a decent benefit package, but all that doesn't pay your bills at the end of the day, so that's a, you know, discussion we're all gonna have to have. So we are, you know, currently, the foreman and I have talked about looking at hiring, trying to find some more part-time people, you know, to fill the void, especially for the winter season coming up, and then we've had other people that have applied for those positions, you know, the vacant positions, and it always comes back to money.
I have been in the public work service for eighteen years or more, so I get everything that you're saying. The town of Oxford actually pays more starting out than some of the surrounding towns. And this brings me back to my exit interview question because I have talked to some of the employees that left and it was not solely about the money. And that's why I say exit interviews might be a thing to look into because what you're being told or what is being said is not the complete real reason why people might be getting done. I'm trying to not make it a personnel matter, so I'm trying to choose my words specifically. I know that unions can be tough. We have a union where I work and we're going through, you know, starting negotiations here in another month or two, but I don't think it's just a money thing. I think other things needed to be looked into and, you know, the benefits are great, but when you've got somebody who's been here for twenty-four years, they leave, maybe some questions should be asked while you're leaving, twenty-three years, whatever it was, but, you know, to be where we are before winter, we're getting pretty close to snow. I know, for example, my road that I live on really could use some patch because about the first snowstorm, when that wind comes down there, we ain't gonna have road left. So I know that there's a lot of work to be done before winter. We're behind in work where I work because we had some rainstorms over the summer, but we, I wanted to know what the board was gonna do to help push the process along, what we can do to entice people, what there is to offer, and, you know, it's gonna be a long winter and two people aren't gonna really cut it.
I agree with you there.
I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention in here and bring it to the board's attention, which I'm sure they all know anyways, but that's my concern.
Thank you.
May I ask a question in regards to the comment?
Go ahead.
Do you have a recommendation you'd like to make to this election?
With a union, it is hard to make recommendations because the union contract, you can only do what the contract says. One thing that, when I started where I work, I kinda told them what I would like to have and they couldn't offer me the money that I was asking for, but they could offer me two weeks vacation to start with. Instead of having to wait, you know, work a year to get you two weeks, they gave me two weeks to start right off the bat, to entice me to come over. They couldn't give me more money or they couldn't, you know, give me a position because of the union contract, so you have to follow what the union contract states, but the union contract doesn't state anything about vacation time or, one other thing that I get from my job is that I get an extra hundred and twenty-five dollars a week to keep my wife off the insurance because she has her own insurance where she works, so I, that was something that they offered me outside of the union contract. So there are things that you can offer that don't involve the union.
Mr. Penfold?
Why couldn't we subcontract workers? People that, you know, like they're self, that can run excavators, jump trucks, we've got a day off, I can call the town and say, hey, I'm free today, and I work, you gotta work. There's a lot of people in town that would do that and then you don't have to be part of the union to do that.
So you get in some very murky waters when you're replacing union labor.
You're not replacing, you're trying to fill a void.
You're doing jobs that are union jobs because they've negotiated in the union. Now you're doing that work with non-union either employees or contractors. I'm not saying you can't, but it's very, very tricky to start.
I was just thinking that'd be something that, you know, if you can get a guy to help you for two or three days, that's better than not having a body at all, you know.
Especially if you get somebody that don't look, how to rubber clip it and whatnot, and get the license and they can do all that. I would not disagree with you. Sharon, you have?
Well, when it comes to union contracts, you really have to be careful and even though, it's Nate, right? Even though Nate stated those things, I was part of negotiating this particular contract, those same items are in our contract, so we have no leeway when it comes to what you mentioned. So it's, you have to know the specifics of what the contracts are. It's okay to, you know, make those recommendations, but if we already offer an employee to more money instead of his spouse or her spouse being on the policy, that's already available and that is in the contract as well. So we're kinda challenged when it does come to a union contract like that. You have to know it's in it before you do any of these things and anything that we're able to do outside of a contract, we do do so that the individuals, we can bring them on if they're qualified. Another thing, Mr. Penfold, anyone who works for the town has to have a background check. So you wouldn't be able to just come in the office today and say, hey, I'm available today, can I work? That wouldn't be able to happen. We do criminal background checks and we do, anyone who drives a vehicle, that, we have to do a motor vehicle check, so there's all of these things when you think about, you know, the complete picture. And yes, we do have three openings right now. It's very hard to find highway workers for many reasons, especially in the highway department because there's not a lot of people that wanna plow all hours of the night once the winter comes, so I just wanted to add that in case anybody's not aware of those things.
I was not aware of what Oxford's contract was. She had asked my thoughts, I gave it, that was where I come, I hadn't read Oxford's union contract, that's just my opinion on what she asked me.
You have to be, you mean if you wanna work for the town? Why would I have to join it?
So if you're a full-time employee and you work for that department, you can choose not to enroll in the union, however, you're still governed by the labor agreement. So if you're, if you're a full-time employee, you fall into that. If you are a contractor that we worked out a contract with, that's something that we could look at, but then you would then be responsible as a contractor for supplying your own liability insurance and so forth.
Yeah, exactly. But like she was saying, okay, I can give you my license, do a background check, tell me, but if you turn my insurance in, you know, a million dollar coverage, I can tell you, hey, maybe where can I help? Can I help the town and maybe some people that, you know, right now my business is dead. So it's like, no, I go help somebody, you know? I mean, it's just an idea to kinda help fill the void. I've already got the insurance sitting there doing nothing. So it's just an idea, there might be some other company, you know, guys that aren't really busy that say, jeez, I could go earn some extra money doing something.
How much longer is the contract valid for the, for the union? It just doesn't seem like there's much of a union enough for some people.
Yeah, I think we've got another eight months.
Jim doesn't count.
No, Jim doesn't count, no, there's only, Jim?
Is the parks and rec guy a full-time employee?
Parks and rec guy?
Or the?
The maintenance position, if you will, no, he's a, he's a full-time, so we've got one guy who's a CDL driver in the highway department, the other one who does, you know, maintenance and that kinda stuff, and he's also full-time, but he doesn't have a CDL. So that position is specific to.
But he's still part of the union?
Yes.
Okay. So is there any union rules that say you have to have a number, certain number of employees? I don't know the answer to that question, but is there, if you drop below a certain number of employees, the union is not active at that point?
No, it is active.
I'm not sure, I wasn't, that was a.
It is active, even if we lost three people.
They would have, the members would have to vote to dissolve their union at some point.
Okay.
The remaining members, and they have a majority.
And a part-time person isn't, doesn't qualify to be in the union, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so. There are ways around the union, part-time and whatnot. It would save the town a lot of, you know, hassle, you know, maybe that's something we should look into instead of trying to be full-time, let's get a bunch of part-time.
Lois?
I have a problem with that simply because that attitude, whatever you wanna call it, solution, really just takes away from the reason these people have been working for many years at the town and you, if you start, just anybody can come and I appreciate the thought, I really do, but if anybody can just come in and do their job for a couple of days and get paid and probably get more than they would at this point, I would say that you're destroying the morale for your.
You don't have any morale there, there's nobody there.
So we're not, we're not, but we're not, nobody up here is looking to not hire employees, but anybody that's running a business or has employees realizes everybody needs help. Everybody's hiring and nobody wants to come in and apply. So we're gonna do the best we can to fill those vacant positions and if we can't, we'll do what we have to to come up with solutions so your road will get plowed this winter.
So it wasn't just about hiring the new people, it was more of a question too of, as to why is everybody leaving? So let's not overlook that either. I think there may be some red flags in there that maybe need to be addressed, not just hiring new ones, it's why is, why is everybody leaving?
And I'm not naive to the things you're saying.
I just wanted to voice my concern as a back end result.
Anybody else? Any other?
Right on the end of number six road, on twenty-six, to come out, you gotta get, the nose of your vehicle pretty far out in the road now because of the rush, the rushes are all up again. We've had to keep count them many times and, you know, most of the trucks are actually sticking there, no one's out into twenty-six now because you can't say.
Okay. And that state issue?
I'll, I'll.
I believe it is the last time we went up there and told the state.
Look at your, I don't know if you said your name, I didn't hear.
Nathan Royer. Nathan Royer. Is the mill rate getting voted on in executive session this year?
No, and the mill rate won't get voted on in executive session anyway. It'll be in a public meeting when it's voted on.
Okay.
So we can address that real quick. The evaluation is complete, the numbers are being crunched, we don't know what the mill rate's gonna be. The mill rate's gonna go down from where it is. We just don't know to what number yet.
So I have a few concerns and I get values are up with the market and the mill rate's gonna go down to balance that. My concern is, one, I think KRT had launched the appraisal process in a lot of places. Aside from that, my question to the board was if we didn't do the appraisals and we were just, we had our budget we wanted to meet, what the mill rate would have been this year? And are we targeting that same total value to get from property taxes within the mill rate or trying to take advantage of the situation, add to a slush fund or add to anything extra? So like if my property tax doubled, do I expect my tax building to cap, I mean, the mill rate to cap or is the same total tax bill?
I would personally love to see that because my property might have doubled, but we don't, we don't know yet. I can tell you that if anybody here is looking to create a slush fund, to set the mill rate any higher than it absolutely needs to be set at, I will not support, I will not support any mill rate that's higher than what it needs to be.
Right, so we voted on the budget and they obviously went out to support a couple of things, so the mill rate would have had to have increased from there or you have any concern?
Unless there's more revenue coming in.
May I make a comment on that?
Absolutely.
So to answer, just to kinda hit on that point, no matter what happens with the assessments, it costs X amount of dollars to run the town and that's not gonna change. So X amount of dollars to run the town and if the assessments go up, that's where the, you know, the mill rate has a possibility of coming down. There's not gonna be, and I think, I don't wanna speak for the board here, but I don't suspect that the board is gonna be supportive in any way of creating a slush fund. They're gonna, the purpose of the commitment is gonna be to get business done based on the budget that was voted on at town meeting, so.
I know we went back to KRT and said, fixed a few things, is there gonna be any more? Follow-up with that, we don't know, several firsthand accounts of crazy things.
So you're talking about you called the number that came on the paper and discussed with them and did they send you a new form?
I don't know if you wanna do a first, a firsthand.
Your name, sir?
My name's Joe Cohen, I live down on the river down there. I have a, it's a small camp, it used to, it's an old camp. It's sixteen by twenty, it's been vacant for years, windows been smashed out by kids. It's pretty fraying to the inside, there's no door on it, sits probably thirty feet off the home and pond, you can't even see it from the road, it's so grown up. My tax bill last year on it, roofs almost falling in too, was a thousand dollars. The appraisal this year was ninety-one thousand eight hundred dollars. So I called them, we spoke about it, I asked if they even looked at it. They hadn't. They got all the information from town, so I got a new one and it's, what is it, thirty-nine thousand, it's still valued at forty thousand. Somebody give me a hundred bucks, it's just a building, no land. And I mean, I've got two small sheds on the main property, the roofs are falling in, they buy a lemon for a couple hundred bucks a piece. Somebody give me ten bucks, I could have them. And I've called and asked them, it's obviously haven't come to look at this.
Can you note that?
Yeah.
I just, Trish Larrabee, I have a quick, just a quick comment to make about that. So I, like many others, I called KRT, was directed to their website, which I did. My tax bill last year on it, roofs almost falling in too, was a thousand dollars. The appraisal this year was ninety-one thousand eight hundred dollars. So I called them, we spoke about it. I asked if they even looked at it. They hadn't. They got all the information from town. So, I got a new one, and it's, what is it, thirty-nine thousand? It's still valued at forty thousand. Somebody give me a hundred bucks. It's just a building, no land. And I mean, I've got two small sheds on the main property. The roofs are falling in. They value them for a couple hundred bucks a piece. Somebody give me ten bucks, I could have them. And I've called and asked them. Obviously haven't come to look at this.
Want to note that?
Yeah.
I just, Trish Larrabee, I have a quick, just a quick comment made about that. So, I, like many others, I called KRT, was directed to their website, which I did. Wasn't very helpful. Again, I was curious to how they came up with the valuation of my house. My concern is, then I get another letter saying that they had lowered it by ten thousand, but no explanation as to why they lowered it. I mean, so is it my responsibility to now dig to determine how they came up with that value? I mean, I can look at the tax records. I've been in my house thirty years, over the years, thirty-one years. And, you know, I'm not going to say my house isn't worth, you know, in today's market. But again, with the economy and the people that need a place to live, it's very concerning to a lot of people as to what, you know, where they come up with their, you know, valuation. So I guess for me, I would just like more of an, if KRT's going to continue, more of an explanation of, all right, so what did you use for comps? What did you, you know, how did you come up with that value? I'm just curious, like, you know, I'm not saying that they're off. But it's very hard to understand why, again, another letter's saying it's now lowered ten thousand. Not that I'm not disappointed that they lowered it, but, you know, it would be nice to have an explanation.
There's a lot of people that struggle through. The average has been a hundred thousand. It's almost like they pulled that round figure out of their hand and just used that. I know everybody, the guy who's down to work, I spoke to, there's one up by a hundred thousand. It's like a common number on it. You know, and I've seen a couple properties, and I know for fact there's dwellings on them. So I went down through the list. You could go on their website. And I know they got buildings on. They listed on them. Just listed his land. They really didn't do a very thorough job as far as going out looking at stuff.
Jean Mosher, I think overall encompassing with all of the issues, my question to you would be, one, you're getting limited in time. This is the time you're putting tax bills. Taxes are due in October. Are you considering just keeping the same assessments that we've had for the last fourteen years? Keeping the mill rate the same and just reissuing bills for this next year as is, same thing we've had last year? So that people will have time to deal with this room, this issue, whether or not there is anything anyone can actually do? Or bringing to the residents the option of, yes, I realize we paid these people whatever, three hundred thousand dollars. I don't remember what it was, that we paid them to do the revaluation. Maybe the town would be happy to see that redone. Maybe we would like the option to say, we want to wait this next year and have another revaluation done when things are changed, or hire a different company, if there's a lot of complaints about the particular company. So just, yeah, what are you thinking? Because obviously you're getting quite limited in time that you can make these decisions.
I don't think that option has been discussed. I can tell you the difficulty with the appraisal company. We put this out to bid. It was out to bid for thirty-five days or so.
At least thirty days.
One company bid for the job. There aren't a ton of appraisal companies today. Done some homework. There are lots of smaller independent appraisal companies that are already booked. There may be individual companies that have towns, but they have a three-year contract. And they have three years to appraise that whole town.
Which doesn't make sense because their argument is they're using one year of sales. So spreading it over three years wouldn't really work either. You know, unless you're using an average.
So, I don't know if anybody else wants to weigh in. I don't, I don't think that is an option to not utilize the appraisals that came in.
Is it a state law that each town has to do revales every ten years, or is that just...
No, it's not.
Things are done?
It's not a state law that we have to do an appraisal every ten years. In fact, some municipalities don't ever do one at all. I mean, they can go twenty years. Because they have, you know, they're handling and doing neighborhood adjustments or market value adjustments and so forth along the way. With the way that Oxford has handled things with our, you know, with the limited staffing and assessing, we've been, we've been working with values mostly from, what, two thousand nine, I believe it was, from the last revale. And so, we, where we find ourselves, there's a lot has changed since two thousand and nine. And that's why you're seeing some pretty drastic changes. So one of the reasons that pushes us towards a revale, however, is that the state does look at our certified ratio, which is, you know, a certified ratio of what we can capture for the value, a hundred percent of the value versus the market value and so forth. We were getting, I can get fetched up when I go down this rabbit hole, but we were getting beyond what was acceptable from the state if we continued on without a revale because our values were so out of whack with the market values. So, we were in a position where we needed, that's what brought this to the forefront, was we were in a position where we needed to do a revale and we're being compliant with the state, so.
But now we're on the other end of it because now some of these properties that have been reviled, they're actually assessed higher than you can even sell them for. So, you always used to be, oh, your assessment is less than what you could sell your house for. It's not the same number. It's not comparable to real estate sales. So now you've got homes in the community that are assessed way higher than people can sell them for. So that's not, it's not a comparable balance to the problem. And so, again, I would just say, can you not keep things as is so that there can be more investigation? Or just another way of looking at it? Because it doesn't make sense to keep everything the way it is and just cut the mill rate in half because that, those numbers aren't going to go away for these people. So it's going to be the next ten years that people are paying, you know, ninety thousand dollars on something that's not livable or whatever. You know, and I know there's like a million stories you don't really want to hear. But there's got to be some sort of other way of dealing with the problem, especially since you're at, you're at the moment where you should be putting tax bills now.
They are inflating the values tremendously. I called them up. I've got a lean-to garage. It cost me sixty-one hundred dollars. They value that building at seventy-one thousand dollars. I went, it's a carport dude. It's not a garage. It has lights in it. Other than that, it's a carport pen. I mean, the values that they're putting on these structures because they're not coming and looking at them. They're doing satellites and stuff. They're not coming to see what these buildings and properties are. So they're valuing way more than what they're worth.
And then they have a beautiful tax, or something it's called, that essentially if you have a pretty backyard with like...
Yeah, it's too pretty.
Yeah, like if you plant flowers, I mean, you don't even have to have a building on it. And I was kind of surprised at that. I was pleased that my backyard looked so nice, but I don't have a swimming pool. I don't have, you know...
Why should we be taxed on making our places work nice?
And I would argue that just because we can't find a company to do the job doesn't mean we should just settle for the guys that we got. And, you know, we're not satisfied with the products that we paid for. That's not a solution either.
I will say that I don't think that the board settled on where the town settled. KRT is, they're certified Maine assessors. They have done other towns in Maine. They, in fact, what I called around and I asked about them, which I called multiple places, I got stellar reviews from everybody I spoke to.
But that was at the beginning of the process?
Before they were even hired.
Right, and that was before people were moving up here buying five hundred thousand dollar houses that were a hundred thousand last week. So it's, again, the situation is not, it's just out of whack.
Right here.
My name is Stacy Vincent, and I think I know Wendy, or I've spoken with her on the telephone. A little levity. I've spoken with everybody who will talk to me about assessments from the township office. The last person I spoke with was Elizabeth, and explaining again my issues with KRT and my own experience. Elizabeth says, you don't have to explain. We know who you are. Everybody knows who you are. I thought, oh my God, this is not the good thing. At any rate, I did find a couple of things on KRT. And whoever does the vetting on that might want to go back and look at some other places that KRT worked. Over in New Hampshire, I think they did not get such a stellar report, for example. I think it was Nashua. But what I found in calling them, I had, I followed, I think Wendy had recommended, just follow the process. And then if you have process issues, come back and let us know. So I did that. I spoke with them about my house over on Thompson Lake. And I gave them a number of things that I thought that they had overestimated. And that was back about, just maybe a week after you opened that window to call KRT. I came back, we got a letter then about two weeks later, three weeks later, showed the new assessment, and the same thing. It seemed like everyone over in our area got the initial assessment. And then we got one that was lower, and they were all about the same amount or in thirty, forty thousand range of it. I called again on a lot that had not been kept, I had not spoken with KRT about. And we were discussing the process, and I said, well, what about, I said, can I get another tax card with the adjustments that you made based on my initial interview with you? And I wanted to see how many of those adjustments they actually made. You know, they didn't make a single one. And I asked what happened, and they said, well, we don't have enough people to put all that information into our system. And this was three days. This was on a Thursday. And they were supposed to be back to you with on the following Tuesday, I think, right? After Labor Day. They said, and my initial adjustments were communicated to them at least two or three weeks earlier, right at the beginning of their communication process. They hadn't put a single one in. They said they were trying, they were trying to work overtime, and so on and so forth. But it sounds like it was doubtful that they looked at everyone's comments individually and actually applied it to those properties. Now, that's not the way it should work. Also, the question I asked, that I was asking all the township people that they really couldn't answer was, how is my assessed value being determined? What are you comparing it to? Are you comparing it to other properties within the township on Thompson Lake, someplace else? I mean, if you have a lake house and you get compared to Winnebago Saki, for example, Winnebago Saki prices are at least two to three times higher than anything on a, here in Maine at this level, on a slate at this level. So, because of that, I kind of lost any sense of trust in what these people were doing. Maybe they're understaffed. Maybe they had a, their operation was too small to handle our town. Or the number of places they had to assess in our, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't trust what the result is. And I don't think it's fair to the township to go forward if you have doubts about this. And we're trusting you guys to ask all these hard questions of them. And if you're not satisfied and if you feel in doubt, then let's go forward with it. Let's do it right.
Sharon?
I'm just going to add this. Dana and I met with the owners after the original, and the town manager, after the original assessment letters came out and then everything skyrocketed and we all started receiving calls. I can tell you that this is not going to go away. We have a contract with them. They will have to adhere to everything they committed to do in that contract. It's being reviewed right now by legal. And my property, I have two. Everything you said, I can identify exactly with what you said because I had the same thing. Don't reduce my property by ten thousand dollars and then say, well, I don't know why I reduced it after the original one. So it's the same thing as Trish's. So as board members, we're experiencing the same complaints that we're hearing. And we will deal with it, the selectman here and the manager and legal. And they have to, they have to follow everything they did, they were supposed to do in that contract. And if they don't, they will not get one more penny until it's done. And that includes everything in the contract. As far as where they compare values to, it's not other places, it's within the town itself. Within the neighborhoods, they're compared to the neighborhoods. So what they value a neighborhood at as is they use a neighborhood for that. And when I say a neighborhood, it's just a term that's used in assessing. And there's different sections of town. One section of town might be, have a higher value, like Thompson Lake. I have a camp on Thompson Lake, so I know my values of land there are having a higher value. But when you value a point one-six piece of land at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, there's something wrong. When that piece of land was valued originally at fifty thousand dollars thirteen years ago, I've done spot checks on a lot of the properties around the lake, and I see the tremendous increase. So, the only thing that I can say is, we're going to do everything we need to do to make sure that everything is dealt with accordingly. And if these values are kept, the next process is not to have KRT come back out again now because that portion of what they were doing is done. The letter I got in the mail yesterday on, after I had my meeting with them, said, you have to now go through the abatement process. That's with the town assessor. So now, I have to file an abatement with the town's assessor. Everybody in town's going to be doing that, and that's going to increase her time. And when you give an abatement and you've already collected a specific amount of money based on what that mill rate was, then where do you come up with the abatement that was already booked to pay the taxes? And as far as slush fund, when you do a mill rate calculation, there's a minimum and a maximum amount that you can have for a mill rate, period. And it's somewhere in between that. And I can tell you in the past, Oxford has only kept an overlay of probably twenty-five thousand dollars or less. And that's usually to cover abatements. So it's not a mechanism to inflate and create a slush fund. So that won't happen either. But we are working, all of us are working on this. We're all fielding a lot of calls. And we're sitting here experiencing the same thing you are. So it's, it won't be lost.
I just have, I just have one final concern though. The letter says final, so are you saying, are we all now need to come and file for an abatement? I mean, that's really not the solution?
You wouldn't file for an abatement until after you got a tax bill. And as far as the property cards, at some point, those property cards with all their new assessments will be here in the town office for you to see exactly what they're assessing you for, whether you're being assessed on one bathroom, two bathrooms, or whatever, square footage.
I'd like to speak with you privately. I mean, I don't think I need to share all the details on a personal level. But just to show you what some of the KRT people are doing, didn't have any problems when they came for the initial inspection. But I don't think they've handled the data correctly. And I think it was a joke for us to have to call in, have conversations with them. And they, they were saying, uh-huh, uh-huh.
I agree with you. Like I said, I've agreed with everything you've said because I experienced the very same thing.
And that's the kind of business that was supposed to take the issues of errors out of the system in a large part. Do it at the local level. And don't push it up and have the selectmen have to sit in on all these things, the arguments that people are going to be making. They may be white, but KRT didn't do their job.
Sure.
Boys, Ryan, I sympathize with everybody, but you guys, I mean, get this tax base, the tax bills have to come out by October first. I mean, there's a lot of things going on. How are you supposed to solve these problems when you have a deadline to issue tax bills?
Which is why I'm formally requesting that you hold on using the news.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know what to do then, you know, all these things have to be looked into. And I'm not saying they shouldn't be looked into, but they should be. But you're on a tight schedule there. How do you work it out?
It's going to be some difficult decisions. Like Sharon said, it's not, it's not all of you whose assessment went up. It's all of ours too. We all live here. We are under the same rules that KRT had.
Yes, they treated us equally poorly.
If anybody here in this room is happy with KRT... If anybody here in this room is happy with KRT, congratulations to you, you must have done well. But I don't think anybody's assessments went down. I don't think anybody expected their assessments to go down. But some of them just seem to be out of the ordinary, not, not, mindably. And not very good explanations as to why.
So is the town prepared to handle all the abatements that's gonna come through the door because you have to push out a tax bill in October? I mean, I would think, like, kind of like what she said, can you make the decision not to?
Just because you apply for an abatement doesn't mean it's gonna get approved.
Exactly. Donna only works part-time, so it's not gonna happen. She needs a whole year.
Anybody different on the assessment? Sharon?
I just wanted to add one more point that hasn't been brought up yet. I totally agree, it would be criminal to report any unpriced values this year. But aside from that, the state also got rid of the lock-in rate for senior citizens this year, and that's gonna be added on top of.
It will be in effect this year. If you apply December, it will be, your tax bill will remain the same this year, but not next year.
On, on your primary residence, if you're.
So do we put all these elderly people out on the street because they can't do their tax bill?
Well, even, if, if the assessment is used, the mill rate will go down. I'm not gonna sit here and say half because you don't know that until all the numbers are put on the form that calculates the mill rate, which it's tips, it's everything, revenues, expenses, and then it gives you a range of what you can have, which would be the minimum. So I don't know what that mill rate would be. So that's what we have to decide. We, and we haven't actually talked as a board on this, are we going to go forward and use the new assessments? Or are we going to use prior and then see what we can do from, from that point on? So those are things that we still have to discuss and talk about.
Well, thank you for listening to us, and we're not here to attack you because, again, we all know you're all in the same situation. But we just, I mean, this is the forum to be heard, essentially.
It is, and it's important that everybody understands, not everybody understands the assessing process and how it all works, and so it's, I think it's helpful.
And we appreciate your time, and taking the time right now, it wasn't really in your plan, but, but I think people are really worried about it, so, thank you.
Can I make one more statement? You know, I think all of us enjoy this town, and enjoy why we wouldn't be here. But, and the reason, I think, I mean, every conversation I have outside of my home seems to have assessment in some way. So they're more than just us, as you know, because you're getting a lot of calls, too. But one of the reasons is because in our governing body, this is the only place where we can make, we as individuals can have an influence. And as an older individual, you've got to make sure that this assessor that we hired hasn't done, hasn't made major errors in your assessment. Because it's probably gonna affect you, you're not gonna do another one in the next, unless, you know, we have a terrible recession and everything really dies. You're not gonna do another one for a long time. You might not have to do another one in my lifetime. And so please be patient with us because we are trying to get the answers that we feel comfortable with, and I know you're doing the same.
Thank you. Lost my attention. Business side, five point one, review and approve mass gathering application, Oxford County Agricultural Society, AKA the Oxford Noreia. Moved in second, any discussion? Hopefully we have some good weather. All those in favor? Vote. Five point two, review approved liquor license, renewal application, BB Development LLC, BBA, Oxford Casino.
Some of them.
Sorry. Moved in second and twice. Any discussion? All those in favor? Let's vote. Five point three, review approved Elizabeth Calhoun's renewal application to serve on the Budget Committee.
Some of them.
Moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Department head report. Zenny, you back there?
Well, as I'm saying, regular maintenance. We're doing good, like, a few weeks, we see, like, study for you on, like, us do it every year, like, we have to do some lab work, like, line samples, to, like, make sure that we do all the job good, like you did, like you passed that listing, so it's not like they don't do this yet. Other than that, like, everything is running fine, like, we didn't have any violations or anything, and it sounds like this breaking is, you know, to take care of that, but it's just routine. That's pretty much all I have to say.
So everybody knows, we, we met at the wastewater treatment facility before we came here to start the meeting. It's been very impressed, first time I've ever been there, very clean, orderly. Zenny complained about not having enough space, but he's taking care of the space he's got with, with what he has there. I think he's doing a great job there.
I would just like to add, that was my first time, I'm very impressed, Zenny. I commend you for the excellent job you're doing there. It is a huge building, but every, every space in it is occupied with something, so I can see why you don't think you have any room. So, but I was very impressed, and I, I want to just commend you for that.
Thank you. Try to do one more.
Good job.
Thank you, Zenny.
So another thing that we were gonna go over is the ten-year, his ten-year capital plan, if the board's still interested in that. I've got one for each of you here. I'm gonna take one of us on. Made it big enough so at least I can read it. Zenny, feel free to jump in here anytime. So in looking at, obviously, there's a lot of infrastructure involved over there. In order to maintain what we have, one of the things that the town has been doing regularly is the treatment plan repair reserve account, thirty-five thousand dollars a year, plus pump station repairs at ten thousand dollars a year. So you're seeing that across the board every, every year, projecting out for the entire ten years. One of the things that Zenny would like to look at is, right now, we have one large portable generator that can go to each of the, say, if there was a power outage on the eighty-five Pleasant Street pump station, we would have to take this portable generator over there to run the pump station. What we'd like to look at doing is having a standby generator at each of these locations. And based on the wattage and so forth that he needs, right now, we're looking at, of course, these prices will change, for this twenty-four, twenty-five, hoping to put one at the Pigeon Hill pump station, estimated eighty thousand dollars, based on some estimates that he's received. A similar size for the Roller Rink pump station, projecting eighty, eighty thousand. Oxford Plains pump station for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year at eighty, eighty-five thousand for that, because that one handles larger volumes and requires more power. The twenty-seven, twenty-eight year, looking at trying to do the smaller ones, Welchville, eighty-five Pleasant Street, and then the Town Center pump station, estimated to be fifty-five thousand, or actually, all, all three of those, based on the prices he's looked at. We did, however, leave in there, going out to the twenty-nine, thirty year, replacement of the current portable generator. I think it's important to leave that on there for, at least for now, because even if we have those, it might be, you know, something might break down or what have you. So there's a big focus, big focus on those. You do also see the pickup truck that we use, that three-quarter ton, looking at, it'll be about ten years old in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine year. For, you know, what we've discussed is, they do need a heavy-duty truck for, for their plowing. They also need the heavy-duty truck there, there's a crane on this, on this truck to help you lift things. Lift gate, yes. One thing Zenny would like to look at, though, is also like a light-duty utility truck type of thing to add over there, something like, just a standard F-150 or even a Ford Ranger, you know, something like that. So he's, but looking at that, maybe the twenty-five, twenty-six year. One other small item that he'd like to replace is, he'd like to replace the crane on the truck for about four thousand dollars, when he looked at for an estimate. So that's a general overview of what you see for, for his facilities.
Adam, if I can add, like, if you have a pump station, like, it's a kind of like a priority for us, because Casino is discharging too. And Casino has their own generators, like, and their pump station is running, like, they will spout, they don't care. They will keep running and fast, and, like, we have very small capacity, like, and, like, as soon as we reach a capacity, they can no font it, like, they have, we run that one thirty-six running down.
I'm sure you care, though. Oh, we care. Diesel stuck.
So that's why I think, like, that pump station is a priority.
Very good. Questions? Town manager report.
All right. So actually, much of what has been discussed already this evening are things that I was going to hit on. So I was, most of what I was going to hit on tonight is just because I was trying to give more information prior to this meeting and assuming that the board was gonna be interested, and there might be a few members in the public, so, you know, that's one item. Also, the young man that was here about Aspen Avenue, and the openings at the Highway Department is another thing I was gonna mention, is that we have openings at the Highway Department. If there's anybody that knows, somebody who's interested in working at the Highway Department, I was gonna throw that out there. So I don't wanna say my thunder was stolen, but it pretty much was, so.
Do you know what that current starting wage is?
I think we're at eighteen fifty, if I'm not mistaken. That's where C D L's are at right now. We can hire somebody up to step six, which brings us, I think, close to just over twenty.
Hope they had some experience.
Correct.
To start higher.
Yep. And we do offer, the gentleman that was here earlier, if you do not enroll in the town's health insurance, you get a hundred and thirty-five dollars a week, a buyout, certification, pick time, you know, those, those items.
Thank you all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott. Two, or four items, Scott.
I was going on, I referenced the Highway Department, have either the, their union or has the town looked at going and doing a side letter to adjust the wages so we can maybe get some employees for when it starts?
The members of the union, they have contacted Teamsters and are having conversations, they told me. So how those conversations are going, I'm not sure at this point.
Well, I would think that it's in best interest of both the town and them that, I can imagine they would be opposed to doing a side letter to look at wages to their contract and maybe see about getting them some help because I don't see.
I would agree.
I wonder that is gonna be good if we don't, so.
What would the town do in that case? Don't plow, stay home.
Snowmobiles?
Can you hire part-time plow drivers?
You're prob-
I believe you could.
We, we currently, you're probably going to be seeing a ad going out for part-time plow drivers very shortly. And you're also going to be seeing on the selectmen's agenda on the next time around that the discussion to continue on with what Mr. Hunter has just actually mentioned. So I mean, some of these, some of these items, they're in the works. You know, we're dealing with, knowing that we have this, you know, the labor shortage, we're dealing with those things, just that we're gonna be addressed tonight, so.
What if you had independent contractors to do certain road crews? Can you do that, you know, say, like, Aspen Avenue is around the corner, probably? Okay, so I say, "Yeah, I'll plow Aspen Avenue. You guys don't have to worry about that, but so much money for the areas." You know, is that an option that we can do? Because I mean, there's a bunch of guys that plow trucks. I fly up number six road. I can do Aspen Avenue, plow number six road to twenty-sixth. You know what I mean? So that would, there's another route that a guy doesn't have to do it. You know, it gives more time for the guys that you do have.
Having worked in a municipality that has contracted out for road plowing in the past, if the town were to look at those options, we would have to put them out, we'd have to put it out to bid, first of all. And there would be very specific instructions on, you know, the level of snow, I mean, it'd be very specific.
Right, if there's three inches of snow, you gotta plow.
So, I mean, those are all options that we can look at. I think it would probably be best if we look at, you know, either part-time employees or trying to do some adjustments to the wages, as Mr. Hunter has mentioned. So, but I think more to come is why I would put it.
Other side comments? Scott?
The repairs to the road from storm damage earlier? I know Robinson Road still has some hot top that's washed out. Is that something that, I mean, I, I know this is what I've been asking anyways, is Highway gonna be able to get to, or should we be looking at a contractor to make those repairs before they get worse? And the shoulder on Winnebago Road coming down from Halls, that's washed out right to the edge of the pavement, I hate to see us lose a new section of road.
And the Pottle Road, if this went up, somebody's gonna get sucked off into the side of the road because it's so up high when they hit that, because that road, that's gonna be interesting.
The last thing I had was, I've given the. The Peg Channel.
The Peg Channel, I think, yep.
I believe we, we have funds in the payments.
Yep.
I'm gonna sign awards. Thank you, folks, for coming out. Everybody's leaving.
I'm coming back.
We'll be there.
Have a good evening.
Hey, how's it going?
Great action, yes.
Have a good night. You, too.
One more thing, I called you one day and thanked you for the police department, doing such a good job. I live Oklahoma, West Side of Lloyd. First landing with.
Lois.
I know.
Can't see, can't walk.
They call that old lady.
Good.
Oh, it's interesting, I guess this is the first meeting I've.
Maybe we got you hooked, yeah.
Yes.
No, we try to just stay quiet.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
So Chief, we're gonna take care of a real estate thing first, and then after that, do you mind?
Absolutely.
I'll come grab you when ready?
I'll be right up front getting some fresh air.
Okay.
It's hot with all these people?
Yeah, I know.
That was just me.
I fucked it here, and I can't imagine this.
Sharon will be very happy to see that there's blue pen, with the exception of, is that Mr. Jackson? Is that a black pen?
Did you have me at L?
He does have a blue one.
He does have a blue one in front.
He doesn't have it. This is the last. Didn't come with directions.